Thank you for your goodness and all your mercy, God, because you've sure been good to West Memphis. Lord, we thank you for your blood covenant. We thank you for your spirit filling, Lord. We thank you for healing, God. Glory to your name, Jesus, because you've been so good, oh God, for healing us, oh God. Lord, I thank you this evening, oh God. Thank you for this meeting. Thank you for our merit. Thank you for the council body, God. Oh, Lord, you encourage us, oh God. Uplift us, oh God. Glory to your name, Jesus, to make the right decisions in every situation, oh God, that concerns this city, oh God, as we go up, God. Lord, we thank you this evening, oh God. Thank you for everybody that's working with it, oh God. Continue to look on our paramedics. Continue to look on our police department. Lord, continue to cover, God. Continue to strengthen them, God. Continue to uplift them, oh God. Lord, we bless your holy name, oh God. Look on healthcare officials everywhere, God. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Place the flag, please. Plague the legions.
To the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with justice for all.
Call this meeting the order. Ms. City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Rick Linden?
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson?
Here.
Counselor Katz?
Here.
Counselor Kroom?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Holt?
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson? Counselor Hutchinson?
I see her.
Is she on the screen, is she?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Counselor Mohammed? Thank you. Counselor Monday?
Here.
Counselor Murray?
Here.
Counselor Pulliam?
Here.
Counselor Willis?
Here.
We have a corner being present. At the beginning of our pre-council, I went through a few things I want to add. I just want to get a motion and second to add our overlay be it and the roofing formulations for each ward.
So moved.
All favor by?
Aye.
Oppose?
Alligator, Ms. Hutchinson.
That was she proposed, okay. Now that the overlay be in this aid and the roof formulation, can I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
In discussion? Hearing none, all favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, it's approved. You all seated being open before us, can I get a motion and second to approve and refer him back?
So moved.
All favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? Now referring back to the Department of Agents. Was there any corrections to our minutes?
Make a motion we approve with the correction that all of them can't hit send you in.
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? Our minutes are approved. Obvious, Mr. City Attorney.
All right. This an ordinance adopting a revitalization, reinvestment, and redevelopment plan for the city of West Memphis in order to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
All right, this on the third and final reading. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Or there any discussion?
Just give a little brief overview as to what if you don't answer it.
Well, I think this is something that the mayor had wanted to pursue. I think he basically came up with this, I say he came up with this ordinance. He provided it to me, and then we made some corrections to it, so I feel like maybe it's something you might want to talk about.
Sure, let me see. Actually, ordinance was, we have a lot of rental property within our community, and we have some areas that are not being kept the way that it should be kept. And what this ordinance do allow, not, it doesn't, let me make this clear, does not get involved with the rental for the payments. It has nothing to do with that. This have some with the outer appearance, because for instance, one of us buying a house of $100,000, but the house next to the house worth $20,000, they bring another property value, because there's no one that's keeping that property up. And I know one thing that we all have been talking about, revitalizing our community. And then what this does, just make sure we ensure this. Also, rental property is a business. This is going to allow the, us for who has one to three properties to pay a $100 license, from three to 10 properties have paid a $200 license, as well as from 10 properties to 100 properties, to pay another $300 for their properties. We're possibly getting a general fund, another $150,000 that you all can use, hopefully somewhere in public works or in that department. So we just want to make sure that we are being taken care of the people who are buying property, the properties in West Memphis shouldn't have to look dilapidated. It's a business, keep, take care of your property and keep it, keep it up. And further discussion? Hearing none, all favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. Ms. Clerk, will you give that ordinance a number?
Yes, sir. That ordinance number will be 2557.
2557. City Attorney, the third reading, obvious.
Mayor, if I may, and I may be premature, can we table this until the next meeting? At least have an opportunity for developer to come in next week, meet with council members, verify if this is a truly of value to our community before we vote it up or down?
Sure. You make that motion.
We'll table it for the next meeting.
I get a second?
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? It's table to our next meeting.
Mayor?
Council?
I make a motion that we read R. 1 to R. 3 and O. 1 to O. 3 by Ty Long.
You get a second?
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? This read by Ty Long.
This is a resolution by the Transportation Policy Board of the West Memphis Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, adoption to support the tri-state CMAQ performance measure targets covering the Memphis, Tennessee, Mississippi, Arkansas urbanized area.
All right. Can I get a motion?
That's did it more or less with MPO as well.
Yeah.
You know, I make a motion that we.
Second. Amanda, will you come up, please?
These standards are adopted by the major Memphis MPO that actually, we just adopt their standards since we're all in the exact same area. It's something we've been doing nearly. I mean, I know that hadn't been brought to y'all's attention because it's mainly stayed in with inside the MPO. But it's something that we would like to share with y'all what's going on. So it's basically air quality standards, and CMAC funding is based on air quality standards. So anything we can do to reduce emissions in the area and keep it more walkable and actually just try to get, you know, so many vehicles off the road.
Let me ask you this question. I notice it's the, I guess where the trucks are parked on the east side with hotels on the inside, they got the hookups back there, like when the trucks are parking and running, they have a hook to this, you know, to help protect their quality. What about the new truck, you know, that they're remodeling, well rebuilding, I mean, will they still have the same, you know, because I don't think anybody parked on that lot, I don't think.
Are you talking about on Martin Luther King area? So where are you talking about?
On Martin Luther King.
Yeah, that where the Evelyn?
Yes.
I haven't seen any plans on that. Have they submitted anything yet? They have, okay. We're still in plan review then, correct?
No, it's, it's, last stages of planning. It's just a small addition.
Okay, just doing an addition, okay.
I can check.
Because you know, you're talking about the air.
There's one that is north of that, it's under construction.
Okay, well, that's the one actually that I'm talking about.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I was wondering whether they're going to be able to add the same, I'm just saying when the trucks are parked.
Yeah, I think that's a standard that they have to have with every new construction. But anyway, are there any more questions?
Hearing none, all favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? Will you get the resolution a number?
Yes, sir. That resolution will be 2241.
2241. City Attorney, R. 2.
Resolution by the city of West Memphis, supporting the House Joint Resolution 1018 of 2019, proposing an amendment to the Arkansas Constitution to continue a levy of a one-half percent sales and use tax for the state highways and bridges, county roads, bridges, and other surface transportation, and city streets, bridges, and other surface transportation after the retirement of the bonds authorized in Arkansas Constitution, Amendment 91, as special revenue to be distributed under the Arkansas Highway Revenue Distribution Law.
I get the motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any discussion?
It'll be briefer than the title. The municipal league for the last several weeks has asked us to consider asking, has asked the council of each city to consider passing this to show support when it comes up on the ballot in November for the public to vote for it in order for our roads to hopefully be up to standard, which right now that's questionable probably.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. Will you get R. 2 a number?
Yes, sir. That number will be 2242.
2242. R. 3, City Attorney?
R. 3 is a resolution declaring the intent of the city of West Memphis to issue public utility system revenue bonds and to reimburse itself for certain expenditures from the proceeds of such bonds and prescribing other matters relating thereto.
I think that was top was just a first line, but can I get a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. Will you get that resolution a number?
2243.
2243. All right, City Attorney, O. 1.
Get O. 1 detached here. O. 1 is an ordinance to amend the Personnel Manual of the City of West Memphis, Arkansas to add Section 2.12 exit interviews and for other purposes.
I get a motion to further suspend rule?
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? City Attorney?
An ordinance to amend the Personnel Manual of the City of West Memphis, Arkansas to add Section 212 exit interviews and for other purposes.
Can I get a motion to further suspend rule?
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
Oppose?
An ordinance to amend the Personnel Manual of the City of West Memphis, Arkansas to add Section 212 exit interviews and for other purposes.
I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Second. In discussion? Hearing none, all favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. Will you get that ordinance a number?
That ordinance number will be 2558.
2558. O. 2?
An ordinance to adopt a purchasing card policy and procedures handbook for city employees, elected and appointed officials for the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
If you want a motion and second, the suspended place on the second reading.
Second. I've got several questions. Do you want to go over them all today, or are you going to work on the reading?
No, we can just read it a second time and then, I guess, then pass the last. All favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? All right.
An ordinance to adopt a purchasing card policy and procedures handbook for city employees, elected and appointed officials for the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
It'll be back in two weeks for on this third reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 2537, adopting a travel policy for city employees, elected and appointed officials for the city of West Memphis.
Okay, we want to read that just second time, placing on the third reading as well. Yeah, all right. I get a motion and second to approve?
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
Oppose?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 2537, adopting a travel policy for city employees, elected and appointed officials for the city of West Memphis.
All right, it'll be back on the third reading in two weeks. I need permission to sign agreement with Orion Planning and Design to update and revise the West Memphis Land Development Codes, which includes zoning ordinances, subdivision regulations, and design review guidelines. This contract is an extension of the works performed by Orion Planning and Design regarding the growth of West Memphis 2040. Actually, we had this on agenda several months ago, and we agreed to not move forward at that time based on the COVID. But now, talking with Philip and talking with Paul, we do have the funds, and I think now is the time we probably need to move forward and go and pull the trigger and get this done. They don't want to have any questions or concerns about it, because we do have the representative here, everything that.
This project is a project that has dollars and it's just coming, speaking out of the dollars as far as source within their budget handle. It was budgeted last year, and I did cover.
My budget last year, we covered it in budget meetings, so we do have the funds within the budget, and we, we support the project, and if you have any questions, ask Paul.
I make a motion we grant the permission.
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, it passes. I've been asked to table this next permission request, and definitely, and we made some changes, I feel we need to bring it back, and we did bring it back for the council. So I get a motion and second to table?
So moved.
All favor by?
Aye.
Oppose? It's table. Community reports. Police?
Yeah, we met, but I, we just met yesterday.
Okay. A. M. P.?
A. M. P. met. GM noted that collections were down 43% in May, 43% in May, and 27% in June. And he said, as bad as it seems, that we're not doing too bad. We have other cities here in the state of Arkansas, like Eureka Springs, they're down 90%, and Fayetteville is down like 80%, so we're doing mighty fine.
Okay. Public work, Ms. Mohammed?
Yes, we did meet. Right now, I'm on Zoom, and I'm having a pretty difficult time staying connected to you. There were some very important things that we did as far as the garbage containers. I don't know if you can hear me too. Again, all of my reports are not, I am still on my job, and I'm, there are a lot of cinder blocks in this building, and I'm having a hard time coming in and out. But we did talk about the, the new containers that were delivered, letting us know that a great job had been done, but then there are some homes who may not have gotten theirs as yet. Is that right, Mr. Clinton? Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Hello?
Yes, Ms. Mohammed?
There may be some homes that have not got theirs as yet, but we're asking that you please be patient. We also talked about the application that the Public Works Department has devised for those that are unable to bring their hands out to the side of the road. What you can do to get that application, you can just call the Public Works Office. If you can't come by the Public Works Office, that number will be 870-732, I think 7671. If you can come, it's not a scam, it's someone in the department, they'll be glad to mail one to you. We had a lot of discussion about bitches and snakes and things of that nature, especially there in Metis, in Metis and Navy Street. Some of it has, some of it has been cut, and a lot of it is still up. We talked about the idea of springing, that's one option, getting in there and cutting it is another option, but those are ongoing discussions as far as those, those streets that needs to be repaired. Can you all still hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, great, great. I just want to know. We had a citizen to come, her name is Bernice Gill. She says she had a little accident there at Shopping Way, but she did not produce any kind of evidence that it was the city's fault. And of course, the city is under toward immunity, so we took no action on that particular issue. She will, she says she will bring back estimates to basically see, the car is like a 2005 Monarch Carlo, so she says she will bring back estimates to see if the city can do anything, but I don't think we will since we are under toward immunity. And we had e-waste report, there was 43 something thousand tons of e-waste, not e-waste, I'm sorry, just recycling. And then we had one e-e-waste pickup. Our fleet report, the front end loaders, we had all operational at the time, we had a meeting on, it was Tuesday, September 1st, our rear end loader, we had four operational trucks, we had, I think, four operational and maybe one or two down, I'm not quite sure about that. As far as our Public Works Director, he did a great job, Mr. Bonner's doing a great job, and I know that he's going to continue to do so, working with the committees and the mayor's and city council members. Our code enforcement officer gave a really dynamic report about all the things that he's been done as far as writing tickets for junk cars and collecting past vehicles and things of that nature. Think West Memphis Beautiful really had nothing to report except sorry that we did not have it this particularly year because of the COVID-19, but hopefully we'll have it next year. Our engineers report all the bridges and overpasses, things are still uncut and on target as our last report. And that is the report as far as I can give it right now, and thank you so very much.
Thank you. Parks?
Yes, we did. I did it on September 1st of this year, and this is a report from the end of July, 6:30 I don't want to tell you, this, this report is from about, we haven't had a meeting in about four months, so it's a little lengthy, okay? But this is what I have. The budget was, we'll say our budget at 66.9%. We're over budget at the end of June of 16.9%, and that was because of the park equipment, the benches, and all that they did at the beginning of the year in all the parks. Construction at the pavilion at Worthton Park is complete. All pavilions in the city parks are repaired, refurbished, except Tilden Rogers and High Tower, and they are under different grain. There are two tennis courts in the, in the city that are being either refurbished, and they'll be used for different, they will have Wi-Fi. The second option is to re-surface these courts and cover the pavilion style and place outdoor metal desks and electricity that they may become outdoor virtual learning centers. Wi-Fi will also be needed, but the Parks Department has been working in the city data processing department for a year to have Wi-Fi in all city parks, but this project currently still in the making. Costs are still coming in on both projects. The director of Parks Department has talked with the superintendent of West Memphis School District, and he is willing to assist in both projects, except at the courts at Grimsley Park, because that court is within the physical boundaries of Marion School District. The cost to resurface all three courts is approximately $10,000. The mayor has asked the director of the Parks Department to conceptualize, develop, and do a cost analysis on placing a dog park in the property on Auburn Street that the city currently own. Numbers and plans are still currently under consideration. The Parks Department is currently in need of a tractor and a truck. Engine in both vehicles have went out, and the cost of repairing those engines will exceed the total value of both vehicles. Since there are no capital funds to available, the budget, since the budget adjustments to the budget is currently trying to maneuver funds and operating budget to purchase these vehicles and complete the current projects discussed previously. A discussion by some of the commissioners was held to discuss the possibility of the Parks Department sharing the old library building with the fire administration. This would be an idea placed since it is adjacent to Hicks Park. The director discussed the idea with Councilman James Pulliam, and he said he would explore the idea. Several water leaks have been identified at Tilden Rogers Park, including a major one adjacent to the walking trail, causing standing water on the southwest corner of the trail. The West Memphis Utility Department is assisting with the repair of these leaks. Councilman Murray has identified some improvements needed to be made at Horton Park on Scottwood and MacOllie. We are in the process of making those improvements. After consulting with the mayor and some park commission members, a decision was made to reopen the parks for uses, August 15th. This include playgrounds, baseball, and softball fields. On August 21st to August 23rd, the Supreme, Premier Softball Association hosted a 35-team softball tournament at Tilden Rogers. All social distancing requirements were enforced, including mask all visitors, and temperature checks upon entry to the softball complex. Arkansas Gaming Fish Commission is continuing stocking the John Gammon Lake at Tilden Rogers on a regular basis with catfish encouraging outdoor activities at the park. Upcoming events, the Premier Softball Association has requested September 19th for our next tournament date. Tournament organizers are beginning to book more dates for baseball and softball tournaments. Personnel, all personnel have been cleared and tested negative for COVID-19 virus, and all employees are back at work full-time, including the director. All summer part-time help have departed the department and are currently back at school. The director has discussed some commissioners about the possibility of an administrative programming person for the department. The duties of the person would include grant writing, tournament solicitation, community programs, working with the local youth, pavilion and park scheduling, et cetera. We have two other announcements. He's making preparation to do an outdoor commission meeting sometime this month at Tilden Rogers Park in the evening, so all council members can attend. And last but not least, the West Memphis Christian Girls Softball Team will play their season at Tilden Rogers Park. That concludes my report.
Also, I want to add something. That's the budget chair, because I don't think they over, you all over budget.
Mr. Chairman, the council, when they approved the 2021 budget, we established the capital outlay plan.
Okay.
Earlier in the year, before COVID became such a disruption, the funds that you spent have not yet been reimbursed back to your account, which will do general interest before the year ends, but when the mayor asked everybody to control their spending, that kind of stopped us where we were at. But we need to come in and make those adjustments and get your, I don't think your 16% over.
Okay, I'll let Mr. Parker know.
Yes, sir. What was the comment about Christian Park or about how you were helping it out?
That was one of the parts that needs resurfacing, but it's in the Marion School District, yeah. And so it's not included.
So Christian will do the research?
Marion, if it's in their district, I would think.
I know Marion, that's part of Marion School District, but that's in the city limits by that. So I'm.
I'm out of my, out of my lane here. I believe that comment had to do with Mr. Collins helping to provide Wi-Fi in the parks, and he can't provide Wi-Fi in Grimsley Park because it's in the Marion School District.
Yeah, that's what they were. But we're talking about resurfacing.
That, that shouldn't be impacted by the school district.
Is I'm leaving any other committees out? They met. Jim, will you come forward real quick? Sure.
I just wanted everyone to know that we've actually met budget with casino revenue, so we received our 4.4 million. So from here on out, all the money we receive will be for capital and debt repayment.
Great job. Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir, thank you. I just wanted to mention to y'all, especially with Judge Willis here, there's going to be some more cares money coming down. There's still $150 million out there, and the way I'm understanding things, it's things, it's probably going to be split seventy-five, seventy-five between county and cities in the, in the state to distribute. Uh, I'm a member of the Arkansas Association of CVBs, Convention Visor Bureau, and we're, are finding out that a lot of the collectors of the A and P tax haven't been able, aren't qualified to, to, uh, receive any of this money. Uh, our fast food restaurants did just fine. Uh, our hotels did not do so good. Um, they are begging for some help, financial help, and some of the finer dining set-down restaurants around the state. We have a couple here. Uh, I just want to encourage, if indeed, that the, uh, cares money, more cares money is released, that, uh, y'all will keep, uh, in y'all's responsibility to, uh, distribute this, that you keep the, uh, the hospitality industry in mind. Um, the, uh, public facilities are included in that as well. The Civic Center, Civic Auditorium, uh, we had to refund ninety-five thousand dollars worth of, uh, lost revenues from, from this, so we haven't been able to qualify for any of this money. Some of the cleaning supplies and things like that we have. But, um, I just wanted y'all to keep that in mind. I don't know if that's going to be during next session. Have you heard anything about it, Judge? Uh, I don't know if it's going to be done. Uh, I think it's just going to be the governor's decision, uh, but it sounds like that, uh, he's, uh, going to turn loose of the rest of this money that's out there. Uh, and, uh, y'all just, uh, keep the, the hotels, restaurants, uh, in mind. Um, as, uh, Mr. Pulliam reported, uh, if it wasn't for the fast food restaurants, city of West Memphis would have done a lot worse than they did. Uh, uh, but we're, we're really pleased with, um, the numbers that are picking back up. Um, they were set up for the, uh, curbside and the pickup and, and things like that, so. But, uh, that was just something to keep in mind that I think you are going to be hear about, hearing about here in the next, uh, few months, or maybe might be in the next session back, uh, starts in, I guess, January, February, so. Thank you.
But I was just going to say, um, one of the things that I think would help us is if we, as the council legislator, if we could get something that's showing, uh, the things that we can and we can't do. I'm just saying, you know, just if we could challenge money over this way or not. And I think the more information we have, you know, we would, we'd be able to make a better decision.
Yeah.
If we could just get that, you know, I'm just saying, if, if it's out there now, could we get it so we could take a look at it and see where it's ending?
You mean on the numbers that have?
No, 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 no.
Oh, no, no.
I'm talking about the information on what we can dis-
Oh, yeah.
We can distribute it.
And, and it may not work that way anyway.
Yeah.
That's what's being pushed.
Yeah.
I talked to Senator Ingram last night, and that's the way he's going to approach it.
Yeah, okay.
But it's probably ultimately going to be the governor's decision.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so y'all may not ever see this.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you one thing. Chick-fil-A has made you proud this morning and right now.
Well, I wondered if you were the first in line.
Yeah, I was, I was, I wasn't the first in line, but I was up pretty early, and I mean.
Well, I've told Philip and Paul and y'all, probably most of y'all, uh, will say we're definitely are proud.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and the impact that Chick-fil-A is going to have. Uh, they're the number one and number two collector of A and P.
Yeah.
Uh, in Little Rock, uh, so we know they're going to be here. Uh, but I think you know it too, that Philip will know it, that, that Chick-fil-A is probably better for morale than if he and Mallory landed a thousand employee factory.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, just, it's crazy. Uh, and I think, I don't know if y'all have talked about it, but I was impressed, and I think everyone should be impressed, with the quality of applicants that Chick-fil-A had. Uh, eighteen hundred or so for a hundred and twenty-five jobs, and they were very impressed with all of them. So, yeah, it's, uh, there's, that's a lot of positive, uh, just landing that in West Memphis, so.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Um, now, those are all committees. I had no appointments, no presentations. I got a few announcements.
I had one that I would like to make as well. Not an announcement, but it's a statement that I wanted to.
Okay, you want to wait till later, or you want to do it?
I mean, I can do it whenever you say.
Okay. Well, I will, first I want to recognize County Judge Willie Willis is in attendance, Willis today. Mr. Willis, thank you for coming. Uh, I always see him. I don't know how he hide back there. He work for us, but he, Justice Allen is here. Uh, is there any other elected officials in the audience today? I just want to recognize him as well. Once again, I want to say Chick-fil-A done a great job this morning, and the line they got without even opening. I mean, they had at least four of the cars going out the parking lot, and they were moving fast. So, I mean, I just hope they, they will continue to set a standard, teach some other restaurants how to treat people and the whole nine yards. And, uh, the owner, Jonathan Caldwell, is the, is the owner, operator, twenty-eight years old. Which I can admit twenty-eight years old. It'll be a millionaire real soon. But they are doing a great job. Also, we have, uh, we have some people that you may know in attendance, Willis, uh, from my Chamber of Commerce. Uh, you all know Emily. Where you at, Emily? I want to recognize Mrs. Amanda Evans, Christina Carter, Constance Brown, Danita Ross, Maureen Milligan, Sarah Shaper, all right, Sarah Harlison, and, uh, Taylor Guy. Uh, Ms. Emily, will you come up real quick and introduce your leadership class?
I think they want a picture with you later, but I don't know how they feel about coming up in front of everybody. But, yeah, we, we haven't found a name for them yet. They're, they're the quarantine class, but they're resilient, and there's some wonderful people who are not letting this virus get the best of them. Uh, we've been able to get out and see a lot of wonder, meet a lot of wonderful people, see a lot of the state and the county. Um, and then we're here with you guys. Thank you again for, for allowing us to be here. Um, thank you again for pulling in Chick-fil-A. That was, this, this was the first class that's been to a ribbon cutting.
Yeah.
Um, and it was definitely one for the books. I think everybody got a picture with the mascot this morning, so. But thank you very much. The class is made up of everyone from Creighton County, um, or various people from Creighton County. Um, if you want me to introduce them, I can, but we know you're short on time.
Um, if you all can just stand real quick as we call your name.
Sure.
Amanda Evans. Christina Carter. Constance Brown. Danita Ross. Maureen Milligan. Sarah Shaper. Sarah Harlison. And my guy, Taylor Guy. And we'll get a picture after council meeting is over. Um, I had no citizen requests. Councilman Pulliam?
Well, I would just want to pass along something from, uh, Mr. John Brown with the Red Cross out of Memphis. Of course, last night, we had a fire at seven-hundred South Avalon, one of the apartment buildings, called a fire around about eight fifteen. And, um, the, the thing about it, of course, the manager there, the head manager that's out of Memphis, he was really, you know, thrilled about the idea of how fast the ambulance, I'm not the ambulance, but the fire department responded. And, uh, she said she never saw anything like it before, you know. Fire department, yeah, like I say, they responded, you know, around about eight fifteen, somewhere along there, and they got the fire out, and they had like twenty-four people that was displaced. And the Red Cross, they had pretty much put everybody up around about almost ten o'clock, you know. They had them all situated to go to a hotel. And, uh, he's interested, of course, he, he, he came before us once before, and he's interested in trying to come to, uh, in the county. I'm quite sure you might be, you may, with a judge. And he want to do more, and he want to make, let everyone know that they're here to help, and they're, anything that they can do, they're willing to do.
Thank you. Was there anything else? I do want to recognize a few people real quick, because, uh, it wasn't a situation, but when I called them, they went straight to action to provide this county with emergency, uh, service here in the county. I want to recognize Chief Dwayne Rose, Chief Clay, Major Allen, and Chief, uh, and Judge Willis for their work. When I got the information, they went straight into action to make sure that this, uh, county had everything that we need to support, anyone that, that may have needed some service and emergency care. So, thank you, guys. Ms. Hudson, did you?
I have one other thing, of course. You know, I think you and I have come forth conversation back and forth at some point in time. Uh, you know, we talked about this treasure position.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I know, uh, you said there were a few people that it inquired, and I'm interested, you know, I'm just saying, if we got somebody qualified or someone that's really truly interested in it, that's qualified. I mean, I'd like for them to put the name up and come on, what, where we could actually get, you know, moving on that, because we got a lot of good things going, and it's nothing like, I mean, I know Ms. Tori and Mr. Cat, they do a great job, but at the same time, that's a piece of the puzzle that's missing. And I think with all the things that we got going, the more we have, uh, you know, just like now, we getting ready for our budget. We'll be talking about our budget in a few. And I just think that we should have this other piece of the puzzle involved as well, so.
Well, next week, we will have a couple resumes for the city treasurer for you all to look over and consider appointing. And like you said, I do agree with you. I want to commend Tracy, but that woman right there. I want to commend her because she's stepping over and beyond and doing what she need to do, so. Tori, I appreciate you, so, uh, we going to get it in and, you know, and go from there. Uh, I have nothing else?
Make a motion with you.
Ms. Hudson?
Oh, I wanted to just thank everybody. They reached out to me during the loss of my father. Um, the phone calls, the texts, even people in the community, it meant so much. Uh, even with the forthcoming, the knowledge of knowing, uh, a person is sick, whether it's long-term, short-term, just to know that people care about you, and they're reaching out and they're thinking about you, it means the world. So I definitely want to tell everyone, thank you so much, and continue to keep me in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
Make a motion with you.
Do we need to have a Public Works meeting after this to, uh, on this, uh?
Uh, well, that does approve in the Lord's favor for the overlay program. Yeah, we approved it. We added it in the beginning, and you are approved.
Okay, I too.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion? Can't move?
Yeah.
All are paid by.
Aye.
Opposed? So, John.